So we'll call the meeting to order, since we're on air now. Enroll call.
Okay, Harry Courtright is absent. Ashley Dunphy?
Present.
Linda Feuter?
Present.
Ed McBride?
Present.
Ron Willison?
Present.
Posting the agenda?
The agenda was posted on or before January 18th.
And everyone review the minutes, do I have approval?
I approve we accept the minutes from November 16th to December 18th.
I approve. I make a motion to approve the minutes that were submitted, both for the meeting and the expanded meeting.
Second?
So you have, you actually have three sets of minutes. You have the November 16th regular, 16th special, and then December 18th regular.
Correct.
So do we approve each one, or do we approve them as a package?
We do it as a package.
Package.
I'll suck it. There were no, there were no errors where I read them.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have any added starters? Hearing done, then we'll proceed to public comments. No, none of you want to? Can't even say hi, huh? Fine. And then we'll move on to the treasurer's report.
All right. I am going to take a little bit of time today because we had two budgets that came back to us. And also, I think it's time that we sort of get our eggs in a basket and everybody understands where we are here. So if you will please look at 11018, and we'll just go down the side of that. The figures are all what they are, and Jeannie has said that the sunscreen is now done, and we can roll that over back into the trust fund.
That is correct. So you're on page three of that January 10th package?
Yes.
The expenditure audit trail.
Expenditure status report. So you've got that coming back, and the LED sign will need, that is done. That is done, coming back and finished. Okay. And the trust fund furniture, which we all know now, will be spent, so bravo for that. So everything is okay here. Then I would like you to look at, it's the 11018 expenditure audit trail. And Jeannie was explicitly helpful to me, because these figures just didn't make sense to me at all. I couldn't find them. And I wanted to go down it, so everybody knows where all the money is. Okay. The first figure is $1,810, if you are with me on that. And Jeannie, that is rollover from last year's budget, correct?
That's correct.
Back into the trust fund. Eight five, $8,500 is the estimated interest we get on our account, but we're questioning that to the tune of around $6,000.
That's right.
And so Jeannie's going to bird dog that?
We're still, yeah. As far as my accounting is, we are still owed about $6,000, because they estimated that we would earn $8,500, but we actually earned $14,000 in interest income. So we need to get that money deposited into this account.
And, okay. The $6,500 is what we paid when we were at Convention Center for the additional architectural drawings. The $10,000 is part, there's really supposed to be 20 there, Jeannie, am I correct? 10 now and 10 later to the trust fund.
Well, $10,000 comes from this account, but then you have a line item for the Croppets or Trust.
Right.
And we take $10,000 from that account.
Right.
For nonfiction, so, for books.
Thank you. The next figure is what you have voted on to expand for the Wellwood Mary Patio.
The, hold on Linda, that's, sorry, excuse me, the $19,433?
Oh, sorry.
That is the closing out of our accessing the past project, and putting that, those funds back into this account.
So putting that back. So we're really putting money back into that account, and not just leaving it out there to hang. Okay, thank you, Jeannie. And the next one, you know. And then the $2,000 is also going back from the sunscreen state, is correct.
That's, yeah, that's the closing out of that account.
And the other items are donations, and I'd like to just publicly talk about the $250. This is the, one of my favorite people that come to the library, the Left Coast Lesbian Writers Group. This is what, Julie, their fifth year with us? And every year it gets bigger and bigger and more exciting and more interesting. They bring great authors about subject matter that is really quite interesting, and the women are extremely generous. They spend a lot of money in town, they have a good time, they like to go out and eat and do other things, and they give us a wonderful basket of books. And so I always want to give them a shout out, because they're generous and wonderful people to work with. So I just want you to kind of tune into this page from now on, as we move through our year. I think there's a lot of numbers, and Jeannie was helpful. I said, what in the heck are these? What else, Jeannie, would you like to say?
I just wanted to publicly thank a donation, a donor, Jane Higgins, who donated $100 to the trust fund.
Yes.
So that's a really nice, every dollar counts.
Well, that's what I tried to say last night, before the mayor camed me off, but we did the best we could.
So point of clarification, these are directly to the trust fund versus to some other accounts? So they made their gift to the trust fund?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and so any donations that come to the Palm Springs Library go to the trust fund, and then they go into this account called Future Library Projects, where it can be spent however. Except for the Croppetsers, their donation, they were very clear about restricted gifts, and so we set up a separate line item and account for them, for those funds.
And then you take your book money out of that as directed?
Yes, because they said we could buy books with that.
Yeah, okay, thank you for your patience. That's the treasurer's report.
So, Madam Chair of the Finance Committee, so we're starting out this year with $1.6 million in the trust fund, is that correct?
I think so.
Yep. 1, 6, 7, 4.
But just in that account?
Okay.
Well, because technically, you've got $2.1 million, because you've got $236,000 in the Croppetsor Trust.
Right.
And then you have the funds that have not been spent for the other projects, so technically...
All accounts, $2.1?
There you go. There you go.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Linda, and then now the report from the Friends of the Palm Springs Library Liaison. And introduce yourself, Jackie, and say hello.
Just turn on the microphone. Good afternoon. I feel like I see you guys like five times a week, but I like it. Good afternoon. For this, our updated report, last month I reported our generous donation from the Pollock Family Trust, where we were able to provide some funds for the library, and they'll be hopefully, I know they will, I don't know, hopefully, they're going to use them, and soon. And we also invested $200,000 in a CD for the future. And we have had a wonderful opportunity to work with and be a benefactor, sponsor for Palm Springs Speaks. The highlight, of course, was Al Gore, and that was a fabulous experience for me personally, because I got to sit at his table. And so thank you for that.
See what we do for sponsors? Anybody out there that wants to be a sponsor?
Yes, you get to sit with Al Gore. So, anyway. But anyway, that was a great collaboration with the Palm Springs Film Festival, so thank you, Palm Springs Speaks, for doing that, that we're basking in the attention that the Friends is getting. And then we will be participating in Deepak Chopra on February 3rd, and we'll be providing volunteers, and also we will have a table for the Friends out there, and help in any way we can. And we'll do the same thing for Lisa Scottolini on March 26th? March 26th, thanks, Julie. And then we will be having some modernism events, we will have two, oh gosh, I think it's February 22nd. And we will be having a lecture, Desert is Amuse with Alan Hess. And then we will be having a tour of the Stevens Home. And, oh my goodness, I forgot. And I believe Alan Hess is doing that as well? Is he?
Uh, no.
No.
Preservation.
Thank you very much. We're partnering with the Preservation Society, so we're pretty excited about that, that we were able to do that for modernism. And then our last larger event that we'll do, excuse me, will be our annual meeting, which will be on March 25th, and it will be at Gloria Swanson's former home, which is now Casa Amen, which is a lovely boutique hotel. So we just were there getting things ready, and we're pretty excited about that, so we hope you will all come. And also, we are very pleased to be a part of meeting together with the foundation and the trustees, and for the Friends to meet together. I think this has been a real positive thing. I can, I can tell that our board really enjoys that we are collaborating and working together, and so I think it makes us a stronger unit. So that's it from the Friends. And thank you for all your support.
Thank you, Jackie, for yours. All right, so let's move on to legislative action, the Wellwood Patio Design Landscape Historian request. And I assume that's going to be our gentleman here?
Hi, good afternoon.
Good to see you again.
Wellwood Patio Design Landscape Historian, as I'd mentioned last month. We received a proposal from Steve Kalon in the amount of $325 to do Phase One, which was an assessment and a recommendation of report to describe the existing landscape we had at the Wellwood Library, and see how we can push those comments forward to the design, see if we're able to incorporate some of that. There was a Phase Two also identified in the proposal, for an amount to be determined, which was pretty much just a time and material, based on working with the designer, the landscape designer we have on contract, and kind of going back and forth to revise the design to have a landscape historic theme to it or background. And just, I know we couldn't really talk about it last month in depth, and I wanted to see if the library board has had some any other discussions, or if they'd like to discuss it today. But again, the item is still in question. It would support the library, the back patio improvement design that we have to date, and just get us ready when we go to HSPB to request a certificate of approval. And that concludes my report. I'm open for questions.
Discussion?
It's a question or a comment, Frankel? I mean, I feel, I've done my own research, everything you can find from the Historical Society. There's not a lot archival about that time. I respect Gary John highly, because he's really protecting things. But if you look at what we have, those of us who were there and lived there a little bit, it was cacti, it was bougainvillea, and you can look at the photos that I've brought today. And I don't know why we need this professional person to do that. There's, in my opinion, nothing really historical about or significant. There were concrete planters in the front at one time, in the back was a round, somebody must have had a well there or something, and they put flowers in it, and you see that, and there was grass in the back. So if, I don't know, my opinion is, it's a little bit of money, but I don't think we need it. We keep whittling away at our budget, and I think architect, landscape architect today can look around town, look across the street, and keep us in, coordinate with what's in the neighborhood, but just to pay somebody to go and look at the same pictures, he's got great credentials, better than mine. But that's my point of view. And so every penny we take out of the big pot is what we're going to end up at the end, when the real work gets done. That's my opinion.
And I tend to agree with Linda, but I think what you're kind of telling us is this is almost like we have to pay a, this is a fee to get this through HSPB. I mean, they want this report before they're going to approve the design we've submitted, or am I paraphrasing here?
No, it's a request from HSPB to entertain a proposal from a landscape historian to do an assessment, to provide recommendations, to incorporate that into the current design plans we have. And whether it changes, whether it's minor changes, or not so minor changes, it's to something at the end of the day where they will like, the library board will like, the council subcommittee would like, so that we can move forward with this project and get it out to bid, and do the back patio improvements.
Because, I mean, I do agree with Linda, because if you look, I mean, it's, you know, it was grass and oleander stuff that we would never put in now, but I think what they're saying is they want to research the time at 1940 and see what would have been appropriate. But what I really am not too interested in is getting a lot more opinions on this thing after the many years we've already spent on it with the subcommittees, but I think, I understand what you're saying about, they just want this as a 325. I mean, I think just for the efficacy of getting the project done, that we should approve the 325 and have it done, if it's just another piece of paperwork. I totally don't agree that it's necessary, but I think if it's a request from another commission, that we have to entertain it, and it's probably better to just do it, because then it could be another three months where they're coming back and not approving. And until we get that approval, we can't move on to the council to get the approval to move on with the project. So I know it's a small bump, and it's a little bit of money, but in the long run, I think it's better to, and this is again just my opinion, and we'll vote on it, that we just approve it and move on.
I'd just like to add that it's a subject matter expert, for the most part, just like a peer review, in any capital projects that I do. And if it's out of the norm, you know, I typically like to consult on the side, get a subject matter expert, do a separate proposal, have them peer review, our designers' design, make sure things are right, if they have any comments, you know, they'll incorporate them, but that's what it is.
Are the problems with the Historical Preservation Board, they just simply want to do what you're saying, verify that it's correct and so forth? Or do they have problems with the plan as they see it? Are there problems what they like or don't like specifically?
Well, we've met twice, and I've shared with them the concept that we originally had, which was really busy. I shared with them the simplified concept, and then we looked at the preliminary drawings, which you folks have seen not so long ago. And, you know, they like a lot of the elements there, but they would just like to see, well, take a step back, and that era, you know, was there that much of pavers? You know, maybe a little more DG, maybe a different type of planting, et cetera. But what they've seen so far, you know, they like. So again, it would just be a subject matter expert. I'm not familiar of any record drawings or archives, so if you're willing to share that information with me and pictures, so be it, that'd be fantastic.
And we can easily, well, she's got that, but the Historical Society hasn't.
This is what is that historical, and Jerry and I...
Sure.
If I can scan that and make it digital for everyone, if you would like.
Yeah, please.
Send it out to everybody.
You have to remember, on both sides of the library, there was green grass, which is now concrete from wall to wall and some palm trees. And the palm trees were much, much lower, so you have this beautiful, you know, green look above the library. Today, they're very, very high, and you don't see that lovely lush greenness. And I do know, many of the plantings that were at the Wellwood home and the Cornelia White home were fruits and vegetables and flowers, and magnolia trees. And Will Kleindings can help us out with that, too, and he remembers the magnolia trees amazingly. So the planters were like pyracantha up and cacti, and so you take a look and see what you...
Yeah.
It was way before ficus trees were popular, for sure, and a lot of oleander, but I don't remember oleander even in the back, because there was a wall and you didn't have the Westman building, and that's where all the tortoises were, there were really two, you know.
So, so we have a good plant palette, I believe, on our set of drawings?
I think so.
But again, just...
I think it's the idea, too, that we're trying to actually have a more green and sustainable landscape with less watering and less maintenance, which is not going to be historically accurate, but does match the style of the building and matches the style of the desert, which is my main thing. I don't want to plant it in grass and oleanders anywhere than anybody else.
No, no.
So, yeah, I get what you're saying, but yeah.
So again, it's just a subject matter expert, bringing them onboard to peer review.
Ashley, add any other comments, questions?
And why are we being asked to pay for this?
Well, yeah.
Because I remember the last meeting...
I don't think they have a budget to pay for it.
Harry brought up, why are we being asked, and why isn't the city paying for this? And so I, maybe I'm channeling him today, but I don't think we ever got that answered, why are we being asked to pay for this?
Well, at the moment, we just have the library trust funds for this capital project. That includes the design, it includes my time, it includes the construction drawings, it'll include the services that we retain from the current consultant when we go out to bid, and we do get questions during construction and so forth. So it's pretty much from beginning to end. The city has never, have never been asked to consider that. It could be a consideration, but because we're using funds for the library trust to do this project 100%, that's why we're bringing it to your request.
And we just spent $325 in the last 15 minutes talking about this, probably.
And his time alone, not counting that.
But I guess my other question to just to put you, and I don't think we answered this either last time, if we say no, is the sky going to fall in? Is this project going to stop? I mean, what happens if we say no?
I, if you say no, that I have to see, search for other funds to see if we can entertain that request from HSPB at the end of the day, as what Ron said is, we are looking for that certificate of approval from the board.
Does this, if we say no, because financially, and again, I don't know where else he's going to go, that's my dilemma here, unless he has some great things in the sky. There wasn't a whole lot going on at that time, and a lot of the cactus and plants being put in the ground are not indigenous to this desert.
And again, I don't think that we, you know... And again, I don't think that we, you know, I know we're concentrating on the plants here, but I don't, that's not, I don't think that's the point he's trying to make. If we want to get this certificate of approval, they want this report, and we are the only ones with the 325 bucks to pay for it. If we want the project to move forward, because, you know, we're way, we are spending a lot of time on this $325.
Okay, so that's going to come out of your money that you have already designated for this. So that's your first 350. And then, Franco, if we have that and we have the report, there is no more dealing with him. You had a fee there.
Right, it was, sorry. It was broken out to two phases. So the 325 is for phase one, that'll do the assessment, the report with the recommendation. Then phase two was time and material to work with the landscape architect to implement those recommendations into his design, to review those drawings until there's a final design plan that we would take to HSPB and to the council for award.
So that's my question. If we do this, does that open a whole new can of worms? Because now they might need to implement it, they might need to redo the plans, they might, I just don't see why we need to pay for this, really.
We went through the same thing when we did the interior design, and we had to tweak little things, like, I can't remember what they were, but they were little things we had to tweak that they didn't like out of the interior design, the light shades, silly things. But, you know, we compromised and did it. And they had some good suggestions on moving the wall, stuff like that, that we did behind the desk. So I think if we're just going to be participatory with the city and them, as they're just trying to protect the historic integrity of the building, I think we should just, you know, bite the bullet on the 325 and move forward. And maybe he'll come up with some excellent suggestions that we, none of us have thought of, none of us are historic, either landscape or historical people. I know we're, pardon the expression, are people bitching about the 325, and I don't like it either, and I really don't want any more input because let's not forget, I've served on this stupid committee for seven years trying to get this thing done anyway with those people that aren't even on the board anymore. So we really just, I just don't want to see it wait another three months. We're already, you know, a year out before it probably even hit the dirt anyway. I think it might give us some interesting perspective. It's a small fee, and that's a request from another commission. I think we should honor that and approve it.
Oh, okay.
I know, and I agree with what everybody's saying, I'm just saying as a, you know.
We're in a tight spot, which we always end up in a tight spot. And it's not always about money, and we make Franco just sit there and, you're very patient. But they always come back because they know we do have money. And Ron's right, that project needs to be finished. But I would say it's going to be exactly the amount that we set. And so we cannot keep having changes and all kinds of things. And we need to see a final plan ourselves as a whole board and take a look. We hear bits and pieces. For me, it's overkill.
And I think our request needs to be that he comes and meets with us, too, before he makes any, you know, so he has some idea of what we've already done and what the history of the project is.
And after phase one, before we do phase two, is there any way that, I mean, I just hate to see more money being spent. Is there any way that we can say, no, we don't want to implement these things, do not redo the plans?
What I would like to do is if we gave Steve the go-ahead to do the assessment, to do the report with recommendations, then I'd like to see if it's possible to have a joint meeting between the library board subcommittee, the HSPB subcommittee.
Good idea.
And then talk about these recommendations from Steve and see what direction we move forward with.
That's a great idea. I think that makes the most sense.
I would agree with that.
That's worked out really well with the foundation and the friends, I think we should be doing, any other boards that we're interacting with like that.
I know, I agree with you.
Meet because it's, it's just going back and forth and we're not getting the full details. So does anyone want to make, or have any questions?
So maybe we should make, make what you just said part of our approval, that in order for us to consider phase two, it is a joint subcommittee review because of our fear of continuing drip, drip, drip of money requests. I like that. I think I feel better knowing that that would happen.
Yeah, I think I'll only vote yes if that happens.
I agree with that. And Ron has a point, there may be new ideas. I mean, and I, but I do think meeting with them, they may not understand, some of us have a little more history there than anybody on their board. And you want the city to look well, but look across the street, what's been done there? We could look at that. I'm interested in lighting around the front of the library. To me, that's the beauty, is to light it up and have that vision lovely.
So then if we have no other questions, can I get a motion and a second?
Mm-mm. I'm done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm finished, you've heard enough. You have a chain, too.
Do you want to make the motion, or Ashley, you want to make, you're on the committee, you want to make the motion?
So. It's your phrase.
We're jumping for joy about.
I make the motion to approve.
Pending a meeting.
Oh, pending the joint meeting.
Put it in its face.
And second?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye.
So that means for $300, we're getting part one.
325.
325, part one. Phase one. That's it, Franco.
Here's your motion.
Okay.
Basically, it is to.
Sorry, Franco. Thanks for your patience so much. Thank you so much.
To approve phase one of the landscape historian proposal with the condition that you have a joint meeting with the Palm Springs.
Yes.
HSPB. Thank you. Wait, what's, I can't spell. Are you writing this down, Lisa? We got double minutes going on because I'm just like. But are you, are your subcommittee, it's your subcommittee and their subcommittee?
Right.
Okay.
We're both boards if we can get them both together at the same time.
Wow. Prior to moving on to phase two or accepting recommendations, which one was it, accepting recommendations?
Accepting recommendations, because phase two is, would be a whole separate thing anyway.
We want to see what he comes up with, is what you're saying.
And I don't want to obviously get a bill for $20,000 for phase two.
Well.
Okay, so now we have the main library, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Wait, going to skip over 9B here for a minute before Franco comes back and move on to 9C, the main library art sculpture. Is this the base we were talking about?
Here it is. I have been at the Historical Society more than I have been anywhere in my life. This is the sculpture that was done by Phil Culbertson, who was a local artist. He has work in the museum, and presently, some of his work is being displayed at the airport. What I know, Jeannie, you have colored pictures.
I do.
Okay. We have great things, old news clippings that Jeannie has come up with, and this is a color photo. Yeah. It's really quite lovely, and it was here in 1973 with the opening of the building. Now, somewhere, and I need to ferret this out, I understood that Melba Bennett gave it to the, to the library or paid for it. That is not so, Julie. I don't know where I saw that.
Mrs. Pat Summers donated $800 for the purchase of an original Philip Culbertson sculpture, and that was donated directly to the library for the opening.
Okay. But the friends, you will find, had a great big fundraiser, and along with the fish pond, which used to be a fountain, they were instrumental in raising funds to pay for it at that time. You can take a look at this. It sits right now in a very secluded place in the city, all tied up and off the base because the base, if you can believe it, this base was a wood box covered by like marble tiles. And apparently, the, take a look, people, the tiles came off, and it obviously has weight there. And I went over to meet with the art council only to be told they don't know anything about it, but the young woman, Jennifer, said, come in the hall with me and I'll tell you all about it. And she talked about ideas. Here again, they're bringing in an expert to take a look, to see, to put it back on wood. And I said to her, why in heck would you put it back on wood? I would pour some concrete and put that puppy on there. The base is not at all damaged, it's just the sides. And if it's going to be outside with water and other things, you need something that's going to hold up. But heaven only knows, that's maybe too logical. I don't know. So, Jeannie, I think you take it from here as to putting some pressure on that. We have to keep it, talking about it and asking, where are you? It is very protected, nobody can get to it or view it, but we saw the pictures. So it looks quite lovely.
Julie might have, do you have anything else you wanted to add? Because Julie's been working with Jennifer on this project for three years.
What can you say, Julie?
Well, so yes, Jennifer is the public arts coordinator, and she is the one who noticed the, you know, damage and asked for it to be removed for repairs to take place, however that was, in February, it'll be three years. And so when you, Linda, came to the meeting, she did send a follow-up email to you, and that is what we passed around to the board, too, just to give an update. She does have a local arts conservator that's going to come and look at the sculpture's base in the secure city facility that she has to accompany them to. And she's picked them because they do have city insurance, and they've already been cleared through all the city steps to be a vendor. And so they're supposed to come and look at it and give her a quote for what repairs would cost in order for the base to be recovered in marble. And that's what she had told Linda, basically what's in your email. In her email, she does incorrectly state that the friends own it, and we did correct her on that and gave her the documentation for that, that the library owns it, hence the city owns it. But that's kind of where we are. She said that they would, she would be having somebody come this week, so we'll see if that happens and if we get the quote. And we'll keep you updated, but that's kind of where we are with it.
I'm on the same page with Linda of no wood. That seems a little silly.
That lasted a long time, and he is a superb sculptor, and I knew him personally, his family. The other thing is what everybody around the table needs to get a grip on is how, what it's going to cost. And here we go again. You know, we have to, again, be frugal, but be correct. And if we need a specialist, you know, we're going through the same thing in every single project we deal with. So to me, it's important, he is a really notable artist from our time. It belongs to the library and the city. I heard you say and the city, because therein lies, the issue is who's going to pop for it. So I'm just, as a treasurer, I'm guarding your money like Fort Knox. But I think every time we start down one of these projects, there are other things. And when we get to committees, I'm going to, I'm going to ask about something, too. But that's the update on that, and I think we just keep asking and talking, and it will happen.
I guess I have a question about this in just general, and, I mean, considering the age of some of the maybe other artwork we have, are we neglecting them ourselves? How are we keeping current with just the state of just general things in that building that maybe aren't attached to that building, that someday may go somewhere else? You know, how are we doing with that? Because if this isn't, if this is indicative, there could be other things waiting to break, I guess is my, is my question.
And actually, when Jennifer was there, she, we do have some paintings in the library by some noted artists, and some of them are not in the best condition, she was noting some of that, but they're still on our walls, they're still where they are. We aren't at this time making any steps to do any reconditioning or preservation necessarily, but that never, it could happen in the future, depending.
What do other departments do? Because I'm sure there's art all over the city and all these different buildings. Is there a standard that the city, are they responsible? Who's responsible?
Well, yeah, Public Arts is the only one who keeps track of all the pieces and knows where pieces are and things like that, but I don't know in terms of if it's the Public Arts Commission or if it's the department, which is under economic development. I don't, I have no answer for that.
Do you have an estimate of value?
No.
No. We could get one. I mean, we have a, we have, you know, there's a range out there. If you, the couple that we had, we looked up at the time and we kind of, you know, but we hadn't have our specific paintings appraised.
And our paintings that are of value are not in the public areas?
Right.
So these paintings, do they belong to the library, the city? The city? The library, and the library belongs to the city. Well, I mean, would they ever be leaving the library or are these things that are probably going to be remaining in the library? Because I was just wondering if we could reach out and ask for donations to help get these things repaired and conserved, rather than having to have things out of our pocket. I mean, over the three years that that thing has been sitting there, we probably could have reached out and raised money somehow in those three years to maybe help pay for
Until you know what it's going to cost to repair, though.
Right.
It's hard to raise money.
Yeah, that's true.
Those paintings haven't left the library, and actually, other paintings in the city actually came over to be with our paintings. We actually had a short exhibit of pieces, city, our own, art owned by the city, in the library itself about a year and a half ago. And that's kind of actually when all this came to light. They've never left the library, but that doesn't mean.
We just moved one out of the sun and, just trying to take care of them. But as far as the cost, we don't know, but I do have an operating budget, too. So if there, if it's a, if it's a reasonable cost that I can afford, I wouldn't even come to the board for that. I would just take care of it with my general. Well, and this is a thought, I don't know if you guys would approach them or the city, but when I was working at Agua Caliente, we worked with the master's program at UCLA Getty, and they worked on our stuff for free. They were students getting their masters, and they did an amazing job. And I know that they do a lot of their projects with the Getty, because that's where they're based, but they're always looking at other museums to practice, basically, on. And I think really it would just be the cost of getting the stuff there, but it's, that's a great suggestion. It would give them an opportunity to work on pieces.
I think it's a great idea. I guess, I want to, I want us to start thinking, take this opportunity to think ahead. As we start focusing on a building program, are art collections going to grow potentially? We're going to have donors who are going to want to give us art? I think we need to establish with somebody, whether it's whoever's supposed to care and feed our artwork from the city, if they say it's not our problem, then we need to start planning in your budget to pay for that. Great justification that a piece of art is sitting in storage that no one has the money to repair. I think that that could potentially be someone that say, why are you doing that?
We didn't necessarily say that there wasn't any money, there just hasn't been any time.
Yeah. And what we don't know, we don't know.
I'm making sense, this should be, this should be our policy for the future on how we're going to handle artwork.
And I do believe we, we do have an art donation policy.
We do.
In our administrative policy.
Do you think this would be an ad hoc committee? An art, no? Someone to kind of be the voice for that?
No, we're being, we're, we're okay.
We're committed to the maps?
We're okay being the voice. It's a staff project, so we're working on it.
Julie, because you just have hours to burn. But sometime down the road, it would be very interesting to see what we have inventoried and get an estimate on it, because it could be really quite a valuable piece. And I have a question. We are sitting in a city-owned building, but we're the business in that building. So when you say the city owns the artwork, they do no matter if it's given to the library, they say we own it, the city?
Yeah, it's an asset of the city, just like the library.
Well, then that tells me.
It would still be under our, if it was donated to the trust or if it was donated to the foundation, then they could dispose of it the way they like. Even the city could dispose of it, but if it's donated per IRS, it has to be held for three years. And if anything is donated to us, it should be, has to be appraised within a month of the donation, and if it's sold, it has to be appraised again a month before it's sold.
Well, there's a thought I just thought of, thank you. I mean, if, if we're going to, we got to get a price, understand that. If you can pay for it, great. But let's say that going forward, our policy could be that if artwork comes our way, it's, it is given to the, to the trust, that way we would care and feed it. That would make sense, right? And it would be part of the value of the trust, which I think makes a lot of sense. And going forward, in the future, when someone comes along and they want to donate, we say, sure, give it to the trust, we'll care and feed for it, but it belongs to the trust, if that's possible.
Because there are really excellent IRS tax benefits for people who donate art, because I do that.
I think this discussion is really valuable, and once again, we have some stuff floating around that we just haven't had a grip on. And just even to talk about it publicly, acknowledge we know where it is and we're thinking about it. We work slow, but we work. And I think I really appreciate everybody's comments on that. It's important and it's beautiful. Yes, good ideas came out of that.
I don't see Franco back yet, so let's move on to 9D, appointment of the standing committees at a. committees, ad hoc committees and liaisons. I didn't see a lot of changes to make on here, but I had a couple and of course you can say yes or nay as you'd like. I had thought of taking Harry or Ed off budget and adding Linda, obviously she's the treasurer. She should be on the budget committee.
That was an error and we corrected it.
So do you want to stay on that, Ed, or you don't want to go off? Or Harry's not here, so.
I was going to say, since I'm, I'm now on the foundation board, I would be happy to pick up the foundation liaison instead of Harry and then maybe have Linda take my place on the budget if you don't mind. Would that make sense?
No, that's fine with me.
Yeah, Linda needs to be on that.
Who's the other person on that?
Harry.
Harry. So it'd be Harry and Linda. And then we have advocacy, Ron and Ashley, which is fine to continue with me if it's fine with Ashley. Buildings is Linda and Ron. I, I thought about taking Linda off Buildings if she was going on budget, but that's an adding because I know that we also have the, what am I looking at?
The remodel. You have to remodel this.
Yeah, the remodel, right. So I wasn't even sure what that, but we can keep it on there if you want, Linda. It's not really a very active subcommittee, so.
No, yeah, it's funny.
And then policies, bylaws, Linda and Ed, I think that can stay the same. I didn't see any change there. I had thought actually of appointing myself as the foundation liaison, but since I, I tend to get a little ticked off with them, I think Ed would be a better choice than me, frankly, right now, so. Oh, did I say that loud? I'm sorry. So I think Ed would be a much better choice than me on that one. I want too many things. Exactly, they just need a little kick in the, in the backside. The Friends liaison, Linda, did you want to continue that or Ashley, did you want to do that?
Very much so.
Sorry, I'm chewing on my cough drop here.
He's chatting for me and I guess he just knocked the boots off of him. Honest to Pete.
Did I say that I was channeling Linda the whole time?
I have a question.
They were all gaga, that's what I heard.
Can you be a backup or no back? You cannot be a backup for the Friends.
Yeah, I probably can't be.
Okay. Do you want a backup or do you want Linda to just?
I think if I am unable, I'm going to call somebody and say, come. It's pretty casual.
Instead of having somebody official, just. Then I think literacy ad hoc could stay, Ron and Ashley still, if that's all right with you, dear, do you want to stay on that? I think that's good. Remodel ad hoc, that was, I guess, the only thing I was getting confused with, building and remodel ad hoc. I think that's what we're talking about for the main building. That's you and Harry. I know Harry has a lot of experience in doing that, so I'd like to keep him on that. But I had thought of adding myself to that one and maybe taking you off if you were going to do the foundation.
Is that, is that the one that we pulled together for us to review the plans and to make the suggestion? Yeah.
And I think that's.
Ron, I think then you should eliminate Buildings because that's building.
I have a, I have a, okay, so I have a comment. At the top of your sections, the standing committees are in your bylaws and those do not change. The ad hocs can change however you want. And so the remodel ad hoc, to me, is a duplicate of the Buildings committee. So you cannot change the Buildings committee at this time, but you could delete the remodel.
Well, I think we've already done that and it's just, let's take the remodel out. I don't think that needs to be in there. If we need that, well, we'll just discuss it as we need to. Yeah. And then strategic planning, I don't think I have the time personally for that. I, I apologize, I just don't have the, the strength this year with, between Palm Spring Speaks and work, so I don't know if.
I would be doing that.
Would you do that then with Ed?
Yeah, and, and I think it's.
I feel committed we get that done.
Right, yeah. It's just, I just don't have the time.
Major important and you have to have time. Ron, and with you working, I mean, we just impose upon you.
No, it's not that, it's just that when, you know, for the next couple of months it's season, I'll be really busy. And I have a big project already with Palm Spring Speaks, so I can't take too much.
Is that okay with you, Ed, for now and then?
Yes, we all have our burdens.
And then for the other two, I think they can remain the same. The trust funds ad hoc is, is Ed and Linda unless you want to move Harry onto that.
Why are you calling that trust fund? Isn't that all under treasurer budget?
I don't know, it's again, it's an ad hoc or liaison committee that we've had in the past. Again, I don't know that it's an.
I don't think you need that.
In June or July, Harry created that ad hoc committee, but I believe the budget covers that.
It's the budget committee.
That's what I think too. So let's just take, the more of these things that we can get rid of, the better. Yeah, exactly. And I think the well, ad hocs should stay the same because Ashley and I have now met with them and we know what's going on. And we have the ad hoc that we can bring in David as we've done before, who has the, or will, so I think that's fine. So if that was approved, then I think we'll be all set. Thanks for being so patient about that. I'm sorry we couldn't have got to it sooner. And I almost wanted to delay it again today because Harry's not here, but I, we can't keep delaying it, so it'll be fine. Oh, and now that Franco's back, let's move back up to nine B, the main library renovation architectural proposals.
Thank you. Sorry for leaving. I had a bid opening at 3:30. No, actually, just wanted to hear your thoughts on the two that were interviewed a few months back. I'm not sure if collectively, collectively as a board, you've had an opportunity to discuss or got more info about future COD and where that's going to be located? Because I know that was one of your concerns about moving forward with selecting one of the consultants to ramp up the design for the exterior, I'm sorry, interior library remodel, so.
And, you know, we've had these now two separate meetings, I think, without Franco there with the, you know, the Friends and the foundation. And I think we're all leaning more to, and I'm not, I'm not speaking for everybody, just anyone myself, that we're all leaning more towards a new building now than renovating this existing building. As for that, my only concern now is, of course, if we say we like one, it's like, are we spending more money on it? We've really spent, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on these plans over the, over the 10 years that I've been doing this. And I really don't want to spend any more money until we have some firm, firm thing. Now, I did just notice last night on the news that Digicom announced a partnership with COD for the new campus. I know they were, and Harry was talking to, I guess the court got delayed from January 11th again until the end of the month. So we're still in limbo. Now, personally, I liked both architects. I liked the, the local one that was up the street a little bit better, whose name I can't remember, but, yeah.
Ureida Architects.
Yeah. And, you know, he had the history and knew the building and all the rest. I still think the building is going to have to be renovated at some point, no matter if we stay there or not, someone is going to have to renovate it. But I'm talking like Linda now, but who's going to pay for it? You know, that's the question is, who's going to pay for it?
We need T-shirts.
Yeah, who's going to pay for it? Who's going to pay for it? So I guess that's just my opinion. I will turn it over to the rest of the board now, but I don't think that we need to, at this point, move forward with either one of those proposals until we really know what's happening with COD. And I even, I know initially we said three years ago that if, that we didn't hear anything in three years, we would give up and move on. But I think at this point, we kind of need to wait and see if that's really going to be an actuality of that campus going in there because that really is a, with the comparison that we see on the budgets of both, between building and renovating, what we've got to get what we want, it's the same thing. And honestly, just to, to be smart in a fiduciary duty, which is our main job here, is that if we're going to spend 15 million, then we should spend it on getting something that's going to last for 50 years, not a 50-year-old building that we're only restoring for 20 years.
This, this may not be the answer you're looking for, but I, I want to propose it and, and hopefully, and again, this is my opinion, but I hope my fellow trustees will agree. I, I think that there is a momentum between the three citizen groups that are focusing on the library that we want. And also, I hope I'm speaking for staff, we want a new building. And I think that what we should say to you is we should, and also with our new city council, we've got two city council members who have expressed great interest in the library and wanting to find, you know, also weigh in and represent the city on the direction. I, I think for us to say, let's move forward the renovation without having further conversations, and maybe we need to have more pointed conversations about saying to all these groups, are we behind this initiative and are we going to push that? What does that mean? I think we, we owe that to you and to the city planning department. So I think that's my answer. I, I, adding to what Ron just said is, we don't want to spend a dime, I don't, until we've had that conversation. But I can tell you that my involvement with those, all these groups, everyone is saying, we want a new building. And what does that look like? I don't know. I don't know if it's going to be College of the Desert or if it's something we do ourselves. I don't know what that looks like. But I think, I think everyone we represent collectively would, would be very unhappy if we spent money to do our investigation on renovation at this point, based on what I'm hearing from, from citizens. And I think that that's important for you to hear. I think you know that. But I think we should pause, use your skills to say, okay, guys, if you want to go that direction, here's what I need from you all, and we come together and we give you that. Does that, does that make sense? Is that a fair request or a response?
No, that's fair. Just keep in mind that if we go in that direction, we would have to put together a new program, a new scope, which would then require another request for proposal process and just kind of start this whole process again.
Understand. And I, and I think that you know that we're writing a strategic plan soon, which will become the foundation for that program. And I think so much is going to be uncovered there. And, you know, it, it might be worth you sticking your head in those meetings when we get those going and listening to the conversations that are coming from the citizens and from the staff. Because I think that when we start getting into that and we hear what the staff potentially wants to present to the citizens for library services, it's going to become so evident that that current building is just not going to meet our needs. That's my opinion as a professional. But I, I think that you're right. We all recognize we just wasted some time. I hate to say that. Maybe we wasted some money getting us this far with those two proposals. But I, I just don't think that we can say, we want to spend that money. That's, that's my opinion.
Agreed. I don't think I have anything else to add.
Yeah, I agree. But the city is going to have to do something, Franco, with that building. It is beautiful and I see you in there in the planning commission personally with your great drawing boards and that's my vision for that. So I asked and said this last time, this really goes back to the city to put it together. It's falling apart, you know that. And they're the ones that should be looking at the plan and paying for the plan. Because somebody, somewhere down the road, it's going to have to put the plumbing back, among other things. So I agree with Ed and it's imperative we begin our strategic plan and that's a good suggestion you come along and thank you again for your patience and support.
I was just going to say that, what, just to your point exactly, that, that things will, a new library will take time, but there are things that need to be done sooner rather than later at the current location. And so when we do need those things to be done, we do have to actually select one of these two architects because they're part of the local architects of record. And so we will require, be required honestly to pick somebody to do the work that we need, whether it would be a full remodel or just fix the plumbing or things like that. So is that true, Franco?
Well, the scope changes.
Wouldn't that be part of our plan though, do you, that we would say, if we want a new, a new building, you would come back and say, okay, we still have, we still have the 747 in flight, so we've got to keep it going. We can't bring it down for anything. So that includes that somebody, and I think we're all going to argue this point, needs to make sure that it has running water. I'm being pretty little here, but we all know. I mean, it has to be accessible to the public, right? And I agree, we're going to come, that's going to be probably one of our biggest contentions is, because donors and people don't want to give money to fix toilets. They think that it's the city's responsibility. But they do want to give money for a new shiny building. And I think we have to take that, this, this group has got to take that into consideration with you. How do we avoid that? I don't know.
Right. So Franco, are you still saying that, as Genie's saying, that then we should still vote on either which of these two architects we like, just so we have it on record? We're not pursuing and they're incurring any financial costs or committing them to anything. We're just saying if we do decide to do this here, that this is the architect we would prefer? Is that correct?
Or did you say the scope changes and so then the whole project would be different? And?
I think it may be dependent on the extent of change. So if there's maybe minor changes, maybe that's something that we can, once you pick your preferred, we can negotiate with these changes and then negotiate a price. But if I believe the scope changes drastically, then it would only be fair to, you know, put those aside, put together a new scope and then do the process again. That way, whether it's two, or I would reach out to the four again, see with a condensed scope, if they're willing to play, then we would get apples to apples, all brand-new proposals.
Don't you think that when they hear that we want to focus on the building, both of them are going to say, we're in, we want to be considered for that? I can't imagine, based on their, their, their experience, they're not going to want to be a part of that consideration as well, right? They're both pretty big firms.
Right, they would be. But I'm just saying that if you pick one and you want to change your scope a little bit, you know, we can negotiate with the preferred one, see if he's willing. But if it changes drastically, then it's fair that we start again.
Well, we still haven't met with our city council subcommittee, which we need to do here soon, and then see where we're moving forward, I guess. Franco, then, I guess I guess I'm still confused. Should we actually then just try and vote on one of these now or just table this till the next meeting until we have a few more answers or? Because at some point, we, we're going to have to try and reach out to other organizations if we decide to give up that building. We, or, and or the city, need to reach out to whether it's Mizele or Boys and Girls Club or whoever it would be, taking over that building, which still then needs to be renovated, whether the city does or not. So should we say that we want to, you know, choose this one architect for now and then, as you said, change that scope of work? So if it's just moving the bathrooms and that's the only thing that gets done to the building, or the electrical or the plumbing, or if something happens in the next five years where, you know, the, the electrical all goes out, we at least have someone on file that we would refer to or?
Can we wait until our next board meeting?
I would suggest to, to wait until your next board meeting and then.
I'm just confused, so I apologize. I'm repeating myself.
I want it put on the board agenda so we finally do sit down, bring our points and you tell me what you like and then I can make a decision. We saw them, we liked them and here, we have been three meetings away from that, Franco.
And then I would add, on top of that.
Yep.
You know, we want to cut back the scope a little bit. These are the things that we want to remove. These are the things we want to keep. Go back to our preferred, see if they're willing to negotiate with an amended quote and we can go from there.
That sounds reasonable.
That makes sense. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And any other discussion on that? So now we will move on to the report from the nine F, the report from the budget committee, which I think we pretty much had already, but let's.
Well, we, we have not had a budget committee meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, a report from the advocacy committee, I apologize.
Oh, there we go.
I, I did one red check ahead of myself.
See, here we go again. What happened here?
So that's Ashley and I, and I think.
There's nothing to report.
Really. I think our main advocacy work in the last few months has been Palm Spring Speaks. That's really, it was my focus for advocacy, was to have something that got a lot of attention for the library, brought in really world-class speakers and interesting elements. It's got us a lot of publicity, including, even having Bad Chairs got us on Jimmy Kimmel last night, so I mean. got us on Jimmy Kimmel last night. So I mean, but that's what I'm, I think our focus. And I would like to continue to do, I think sometimes you get more out of, instead of going out and banging a pot and saying, you know, read, read, read. If you actually bring in someone who promotes that aspect, you get good publicity for it. You do it a lot more subconsciously than you do screeching from the rooftops. So I think we've done well with this. We want to do it again next year. This has been a great partnership with the friends in the library, and the staff has really worked very, very hard, both Jeannie and Julie, on doing that. So I think we've made real strides. And, and we've tried to put in everything we've said that this is really a literacy effort for the valley, that that's our focus, is to improve access to authors and increase people's, not say experience of literacy, but awareness that literacy needs to be promoted more, reading needs to be promoted more. So I think there's a lot of future things that we can do over the next few years with this. If Palm Springs Speaks continues to have the success it's had this year, that we can really bring some interesting people in. It gives us a lot of additional opportunities for sponsorship, that we can bring people in. We were very lucky to get the cultural center to partner with us, the film festival to partner with us, the Lulu's to partner with us. So those are all triumphs, as far as I'm concerned. So if we can continue to do that and to have the rest of the speaker series of the Valley Ranch and Mirage and Desert Down Hall supporting us and having those people on our advocacy board has really helped. So I think if we can continue those kind of things with everything we want to do, including the remodel and/or new building, that should be the whole point, that if we now can get the people's attention, we can use that for other things. As far as, hey, you know, we did all this good stuff. Now build us a library. Would you mind, please?
Well, I, I wasn't on this committee. I didn't do any of the work. But I have to say that I think this committee knocked it out of the park this year. And I think your work is duly noted. And I don't think you needed to probably say as much about it. Let us talk about you because you did a great job. I think, I think that people are talking about it. It's a buzz. I've been to the two, and I thoroughly enjoyed them, and everyone else thoroughly enjoyed them. So I think, I think the next two are going to also be wonderful. The bar is high. And I think that you've got people expecting this kind of quality coming out of this, and I think you'll deliver it. I think you did a great job. You've done your job this year.
Yeah.
I want to just add a point. I think it's important we do make our presence to the city. Michael Hirschbaum came in, when we were at City Convention Center in, in the open session. I didn't know he was going to speak. He said great things about the library. Kathy Brandt showed up at City Hall. Every time we have something on the agenda, that gives us this tiny window to say something, and it's a tiny window. And I felt last night I would go with Jeannie. I thought other people would come. We do the best we can do. But they know we're there. There's no doubt about that. You sit through the whole thing, you say your little piece. So that, too, to me, is advocacy for the people paying the bill. They know we're there. And they are listening and chuckling and whatever. But Michael did a great job. Kathy did a great job asking to keep funding us. And so the pressure
You did a good job, too.
I did. I did. I did. I'm not disappointed because I think, I've already said what I think. I'm not disappointed. Every window we have to do what you're doing wrong and small things, we're really keeping the pressure on. The friends are showing up at things. Everybody's showing up. And I think the message is out that there's really expectations coming from this board and for the city. So we're all in this together, and we just do the best we can. And Jeannie and her staff are, are out there working like dogs, too, and planning great programs. And, and so we're all, I think it's the first time I've been on this board that I really feel there's a strong unity, a like of everybody involved, and a real commitment to see something get done.
I thought it was amazing how Jeannie sent a message out to everyone she knew in her network, and everyone was supportive. Now, I'm sorry I couldn't be at city council last night. But I think that's a testament to what you guys have built here. And that you can send a message out and say, hey, we're going to be on the consent agenda. And people responded. We were all seeing the emails, right? That's great. That's, we're going to be, this, I, I agree with you. And thank you for going there, too. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say thank you.
All right, so that's good. Good committee.
Go team. Yay!
So now let's move on to nine F, report from the Budget Committee.
All right. We have not met, but I would like to ask Jeannie and whomever is on with me that we do set up a Budget Committee.
Yes, that's, yes, we absolutely do need to have a meeting.
Your point?
I do, because I, I, yes, it's on my, top of my brain.
And that's Harry and Ed, and now Harry and Linda, anyway.
Harry and Linda.
So if we haven't anything else, we'll move on to the report from the Buildings Committee.
You'll set a date, Jeannie?
I think we did. We're just go, I'm just going through the, what we posted.
You could scratch things if you need to.
So Buildings Committee, I'd say that was Linda and me, and I don't think we've met, or there's nothing new to discuss. So we just did that. So we move on.
Yeah, the remodel.
Moving on to nine H, report from Policies Bylaws Committee.
All right. I want to bring you up to date on this because, and we are on television. Anyway, I did not present the bylaws to you at one of our first meetings. And I know it was very confusing, but that was before we, or Ed and I had worked on them based off of the letter from the man we got, Henry Weiss. And we were later to learn that some of that was not particularly cricket with city code, municipal code, library code. And in the meantime, you and Jeannie have had a conversation, am I correct in saying that, with the city attorney? And some things are being rewritten. So we're all going to get back on to what is right, correct, and within the letter of the law of code. And so when you're ready to talk about that, Jeannie, I'll meet with you, and we'll go back and look at the bylaws. You have many copies, and they're all incorrect, but I didn't, I didn't want to
We'll start over.
Yeah, I didn't want to say that publicly, to be quite honest with you. But
We'll just start with the revision again.
We're in a different place now.
And what I wanted to say, too, is I did check with the city attorney. He, we're on, we're on his list.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's very busy. So he hasn't forgotten about us, but we are, we're, we're in the queue.
Yeah, and we'll go from, from that document, Ron, and I feel better about that.
That's great. Yeah, and I noticed last night he was saying that they were looking for an assistant because he has a lot of requests, I guess, on the same kind of thing, so.
Okay.
So then nine I, report from the Literacy Ad-Hoc Committee. Who was that? That was me and Ashley. I think we already did that under advocacy, so I don't think there's anything else. We did the one meeting with James Williamson, but I think we've discussed that at previous meetings. I still would like to see us do more where we can reach out to the school districts to bring kids in for some of these things or more things like that. But we just haven't gotten that far.
Well, one, one moment. Julie's whispering. Oh, well, I, okay, thank you. That's good. I was going to say, yes, don't let me forget that. But I was also going to add that for our Deepak Chopra event, we are working with the high school to have some student seats available. And they're doing essays, I believe, or we're, we're working with the school on some, some way for their, a small group of students to attend at no charge. So that is a great literacy partnership with the school. And our friends of the library have pledged to sponsor $10,000 for a new program called Career Online High School.
Oh, great.
And Lisa Brock is going to spearhead the project. And yay, Lisa! And the California State Library is opening up grant opportunities to do matching funds. And so she's going to write a grant. And we're going to have the Midas touch, because everything we touch turns to gold.
It does.
And we're going to get a grant, we hope. And then we'll double that money. And then we'll be able to offer adults an online high school with a career track. And it's going to, it's a wonderful program. And we've seen several training program lectures, and Lisa just did a webinar. And we're very excited about this new opportunity. And so that is a literacy program right there. Oh, and it didn't cost you anything.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The friends paid.
Can we have a, can we have a motion around that?
Zero dollars.
Well, that's great. Yeah, that we've been looking at that program for a while. That'll be really wonderful.
We wanted to do it for a while. We just, it's, it's tough when you have a small staff.
Yeah.
You've got to pick and choose what you can do.
Believe me, I know the feeling. And so now report from the Main Library Model Ad-Hoc Committee. I think we just did that with Franco, right? If nobody else says anything. Report from Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee. I know that's Ed and I, but that's mainly Ed and Jeannie.
I've spoken with the procurement department, and we are in the queue, and they are very busy. And there is one thing I do want to add, because what will happen is we will put this out as a request for proposal. And then it would warrant an evaluation panel, two city staff, and one library board member. So I know that our subcommittee is two people, but you will have to decide amongst yourself who will be that one person who comes and reviews the proposal. There will also have to be a, let me see. You will have to execute a conflict of interest statement in order to participate. So we don't want a conflict of interest, and it's in the hopper. But somebody from the board can participate, so.
And there again, be prepared to pay a bill. I mean, that's why we need a Budget Committee. So these things don't just pop up. We, we have a couple of things that we know in the hopper, as we say. And the Budget Committee needs to set aside that money, earmark that money, and then we know where we're going. But when we get these surprises.
Well, that's a good point, Ms. Budget Committee. So when, when you guys have your meeting, I think you should bring that back to us. Is we are, we could potentially have that expedited this year, right? So we need to see what that's going to look like.
The nice thing about your budget, your specific trust fund budget, is that it does roll over every year. My operating budget, I have to request a new budget every year. And what I don't spend typically goes back to the general fund. Yours just keeps going. Energizer Bunny Trust Fund.
Yes, it does keep going.
To a sign, to a sunscreen.
They're done.
Wonderful projects.
Yes, but all good things.
Yay!
Okay, so let's move on to nine L, report from the Trust Fund Ad-Hoc Committee.
We're putting that under Budget.
That was Ed and Linda, so there's no, no update. We went through that with the treasurer's report. The report for the Wellwood Ad-Hoc, which is Ron and Ashley. I think we covered that the last time. Again, all we've ever had is the meeting with the city subcommittee, which was Chris Mills before he went off council. We did that at the Wellwood. We walked through it. We walked through the plans. They had no suggestions for any kind of changes, other than the things that we didn't like, which was the covering on the air conditioner and the door, and how the door would latch, and the security and the lighting. So all the same questions. So now we're just waiting again for the HSPB thing, so that then we can go back. And then we'll have to go to the full city council and, you know, go through a full thing with that. But, because it's over the amount, right, because even though we're doing another trust fund. So we'll have to go back and do that anyway. But I think they'll be excited, and I think it'll be a good project. But again, we're, you know, you know how long these things take. So ask Julie about how long it took to get an LED sign. So it takes time, but I think it's, again, it's a worthwhile project. And oddly enough, when we were there for the opening of the rowan, we noticed that the way the pavers are set was the same way the landscape designers set our pavers, which hopefully will tie it in. And I think once that project's done, and that is done down there, you know, it will get, it's getting good use, from what I see on the reports, from as far as people being there. And I know we still have a few issues with the smelly things, but yeah.
It's, it's better. And Jeannie, the towers are coming, or?
I have to, the only thing I need to do is to pick the specific one and order it. So soon, very, very soon.
Okay.
Yeah, I got approval to buy them. And yeah, so I'm working on that.
Once again, as someone who's not on this committee, I want to say that I, I was at the rowan last Thursday night with some friends on the roof for the first time. And I was looking down, and of course, it, there was just a sea of humanity, anyway, because of the, you know, the market. But, you know, clearly what we've said is that building is critical to that corner and to that redevelopment. And I'm very proud of that. I think that's all so beautiful. It's going to be even better.
It is.
And when you look, and I was looking down from the roof. I mean, it clearly is prominent. And I think that if you haven't looked at it from that perspective, do so. Because I think we really, we've got to keep that being, you know, it's the star of that corner, right?
It's what people think, is a lot of people think is our library, but it's our responsibility.
It was packed.
But it's also our, it's our responsibility.
They come in looking for books. I have to laugh.
Because when you think of what downtown was just a few years ago, that that building was abandoned, the mall was abandoned. Now they've both been renovated. They're both open. And, you know, I think it's, it's, you know, time for downtown. And I think I'm glad that we're participating in that process. We're right on track to be at the same kind of completion dates that the rest of it is. And the, the event space will be across the street. And that all ties in. I think that'll be a huge shot for Palm Springs and the economy. And again, we're doing our fiduciary duty there. We're taking care of that building. We're ensuring it for the future. And, and we're not letting it be turned into a restaurant or a bar, which has been proposed more than once over the course of its life because of the location, because it is the, one of the prime locations in the entire valley. It just happens to be that it was needed to a library.
Now, Jeannie, you had said the Wellwood would get a major clean in February.
I believe that that is accurate.
And the facilities gal said they would paint. Remember? She said they would paint and caulk.
We'll double check and make sure that that does happen.
Yeah.
Because they were going to clean the floors first before they did the baseboard.
Because that was
And that should happen in February.
A minor thing, but it's awful, because that's expensive baseboard. And the mopper had just mopped the, awful. So everywhere you went, it was gray. And I thought, this is crazy. This is behind something where people aren't. And when we really hound dogged it around, it was the cleaning crew. And I think we can't let things get awful. There's paint coming off the back door. And then when we get all the Miller moss out of the lights and the windows clean, it's going to be great again. But it's like your house. You have to watch it.
It's maintenance. That's one thing that cities are never good at, is maintenance.
I know, but that's why, that's what we're for.
Because really, even though if those trees had been properly trimmed and taken care of, they wouldn't be as huge as they are now.
Well, and I'll tell you, we have sent Julie the most disgusting photographs of the trash. I'm, again, one of my lucky jobs, come to the trash with me. Why? Well, they're afraid, not afraid, but it's, it's an awful place.
You know, that alley is my, I hate that thing. I wanted that gone. I wanted that open all the way around. But we weren't able to do it. But I, I still wish at some point that that will be gone, because that's really horrific to have that stinky garbage there. That can't be good for those businesses either, that building.
Can you get that done?
That was a very poorly designed.
There is no reason for that gate to be open. The trash guys come through the back. By that, I mean the businesses. The restaurants come through the Westman Building to the back. There's no reason for the city to enter, except the trash, off the Tauckwitz Gate. And that's where our
For the garbage company.
Correct. But people are coming in there to use that as a facility.
And we really need to get back with grit development and talk to them again when we get farther on in this project and say, what are you going to do to improve that area?
It's
You know, rebuild those garbage structures and close them, lock them, have something there where it just doesn't stink of grease traps and stuff. It's just not.
And it's secluded, and it provides shelter and protection for people that need shelter and protection. Where, when the gate isn't there, you have to be in the centerpiece of the patio. And there are people who have vision out there, so you do know what's going on. And you have your cameras rolling somewhere, I hope.
Yeah, and when you do send me those pictures and things, it is forwarded to facilities and code enforcement. And code enforcement has talked with grit because of their ownership of the building and thing, you know. So it's, it's good that you do that, and we'll keep, you know, doing that and trying to stay on top of it and
That was my co-host, me out there the second time. He said, I'm not going out by myself. Old thing.
All right, well, that is our legislative actions. And now we can move on to the report from our staff representative, item ten.
Well, last night, you might be thinking that I'm going to talk about something, not yet. But I'm going to talk about our Star Wars Reads program. Remember, fifth annual program. When we were, when I was at city council with Linda, we had a program happening, and about 300 people showed up. So it was a wonderful program. The decorations were beautiful. We did a teaser video on one of my employees. Her name is Yurenne Navarro. She's fabulous. She just comes up with these ideas. And so she decided that she would make an R2-D2 decoration on our automated book return. Adorable. And so we did a little teaser video inviting people to come to the program. And that video went viral. We had over 14,000 people view the video. Went, it was great. So fun. It made R2-D2 sounds all day long. Trade secret, we, it made R2-D2, someone said, your book drop is broken. No, it's not. It's working, but it's making noises. Yes, it is. It's R2-D2. It's adorable. So that, I'll get to the other thing in a minute. We will be closed February 19th for President's Day. We are currently exhibiting Martin Luther King Jr. student art. It's the Excellence in Art exhibit. It's the second annual. It's now through the end of February. So come take a look. It's a wonderful art exhibit. The students are so talented. And we will have another exhibit coming up beginning of February, February 1st. Through the 28th will be the PS Modcom exhibit in conjunction with modernism. We always have a really nice exhibit, different subjects each time. Like Jackie said, from the Friends, the Modernism Week tours, Stephen's House tours are sold out. Sorry you missed out. Hundred percent goes to Friends. Yes, we have. The Modernism Week lecture, Desert is Muse, like she said, it's $25. It's at the library. Wonderful. Support the library. We just, new topic, we just received a letter that the Library Trust Fund is a beneficiary of the J. Ray Corliss and Marilyn Corliss Trust. So we don't know how much, but we will get a gift from their trust. So nice.
He is a, you know, the Corliss's? He is a pioneer Palm Springs person, and a lovely man. And he lived, he lives in my neighborhood, and his daughter has the house now, and she's married to the Milanovich young man.
Oh.
So
This is lovely. This is old Palm Springs.
Yeah, Denise Goolsbee wrote a, did a story on him. He was one of the World War II subjects that she has done a story about. So, so nice for people to think of us in their, in their estates, in their estate planning. And then in your packets, you have copies of the gift letters, the thank you letters that I sent out to the various organizations. So whenever we do get a gift, we'd like to send them an acknowledgement letter. And then finally, last night, well, there was a story the day before. So we submitted our staff report to city council for our library furniture, which I have been working with procurement. And we have been working on this over a year, over a year. We've been working on this project because we bought children's furniture, and we spoke to all these different vendors and picked some stuff, finally. So then we got, KESQ did a news story about our furniture. Hilarious. So then we got, KESQ did a news story about our furniture, hilarious. Well, that wasn't hilarious, but what happened last night was hilarious. So we went to city council, city council approved it, thank you very much, we're so happy, so excited. These are some of the fabrics. This is the fabric that will be for one of the chairs, or two, two different styles of chairs. Really cute fabric, the orange matches our shelves, sunrise orange, I think that's what that color should be called. And then we have another chair, a study chair, or soft comfortable chair, that will be a faux leather. One, this is 650,000 double rubs.
I wanted to talk about that.
Before it shows wear, 650,000 double rubs. This is a million. You can sit on this a million times before it will start to show wear. And then this is the wood grain representative color that will be on the tables and the legs, because this matches our end panels for our shelvings.
Very nice.
Kind of trying to stick with what we have to make it work. Here's a picture of one of the chairs, it's very adorable. We're so looking forward to this.
Good work.
Well, then, I get a text this morning, Jimmy Kimmel Live has had a moment of silence and a prayer for the chairs, because we have a crisis in Palm Springs. Hilarious. And then, it might have been on GMA, I don't know. Someone said it might have been on Good Morning Mary.
I had GMA on, but I didn't have it on all morning.
I don't know.
Yeah, but I think you should go on the show and do that exactly what you've done, show them the rubs, and how it works, and why they cost $70,000.
We'll get her invited.
Yes. That would be a motion to pay your way to appear.
I can see when you start saying rubs to Jimmy Kimmel, there's like a whole bunch of jokes in there. A whole bunch of jokes.
I think you should have a candlelight vigil for the chairs, you know. He prayed for the chairs, we should have a candlelight vigil, and maybe a memorial.
Where do you find those? You pulled out the worst looking chairs, obviously, because I've never seen those. Never seen those.
They are out there right now.
Never seen those with chairs.
They're on the property right now.
Those chairs are, the chairs with the tear down the middle are in the magazine room.
They are used, in use right now, because they were the best of what we have left. We've thrown away so many, we have to keep the ones we have.
And they won't burn probably ever, so I'm like, I don't get rid of them.
So anyway, the chairs have lived their life, and then I got a text from someone who said, I went to high school in the early 80s in Palm Springs, and I remember those chairs. So I got confirmation, and we have pictures, and those chairs are actually from the 80s, they are old, and they're older than Joe Galley. So Joe Galley said, those chairs are older than me. And we received confirmation that they are.
Yeah.
Brother.
Don't turn them to the historical.
My brother. So we can't wait to get our new furniture, and then we'll have a little ceremony or something.
What, you have a delivery date then?
It will probably take at least 12 weeks, because they're custom built, made in America, they're built in Chicago, solid wood, they, we're not messing around, because we only get furniture every 30 years, so we're not messing around, we want furniture that's built to last.
I think you should send the worst one to Jimmy Kimmel.
Oh, that would be funny.
I'd like to invite him out, Jimmy Kimmel.
Really? That's really.
Come to Palm Springs Speaks.
Yeah.
I thought that the whole, and I, when I was in San Francisco, we used to just dread if we were on the news, but you know, and I want to share with you, I was at a chamber event that day, and the mayor was there. So I was chatting with him, and I had to remind him always that I'm on the board. He said, you will not believe the phone call I just got today. And I said, what? He said, it's about the furniture. And I said, I remember then, we were on the consent calendar, and he said, and I told him, how dare they question how the library spends their money? They're the best stewards in the city when it comes to spending their money. He says, I was just really kind of surprised. And so I said, well, we thank you for doing that. But it was, I thought the story really, I was afraid it was gonna go one way.
Yeah.
And I'm not quite sure I understand which way it did go, but I liked the fact it was American made, he stressed that, or you did.
Yes, I did, solid wood, yes.
Good point, you know, and 30 years, who can argue for 30 years?
Commercial grade.
I mean, you know.
It's a commercial grade construction, it's not Dowell construction, it's Super Duty, and 10-year warranty, just on, because not on the fabrics, the fabrics, we hope that they last.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things the public really didn't understand at first, because they saw 65,000 for just the number of chairs and stuff, and they thought, why? What's the future? I can go out to Ross and buy 20 chairs for 80 bucks a pop. But they're not commercial grade, they don't last for 30 years.
Yeah, we do, we have, you know, 20,000 people come through the doors every month.
I bought them from my house and replaced them a year later, so.
That's what we tried to say last night, is this isn't your ordinary chair, that these, I didn't want to go through the 50 million rubs, but I had planned to.
Okay, Linda, now, that's a, I have to make a joke on that one, I'm turning the mic off.
That's the whole point, when we said we need durable things in the library, and that's why they are so expensive, and I did say that. And I, we need a clean, safe, and comfortable environment, and I happened to look over at David Reddy, he was just smiling, he was, but it's true.
Well, and the other thing too, is if you adjust for inflation, the chairs that were purchased about 30 years ago would probably cost about what we're paying today.
Yes, yeah.
So they are more expensive.
So are you really going to do the burial, or who's going to plan that?
We're, we just, we just had a, we just heard about this today, so.
We're black.
Yeah, we need some armbands, we need florists, and some sashes that say, what did I say? Rest in peace.
We could carry a chair in.
Beloved chair.
Like you do.
Yeah, we could have a chair bearers out to the recycle bin.
Chair bearers.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, let's do that.
Yes, we need some whaling.
That's better than the Ramona pageant.
Yes, we need it.
All right, this is when I need a gavel. All right, back to the meeting, back to the meeting. Anything else, Jeannie, I'm sorry?
No.
And so then, the report from the Library Foundation is, which will be hairy, so he's not, oh, Pete, I'm sorry, Pete.
Yay, Peter, you waited so long.
Pete, I forgot you were there, it's been an hour and a half meeting, I forgot you were even over there, I'm so sorry.
Peter, do you, there's your update, if you want that. It's the same thing from the Friends meeting. But you can give us your own words.
Good afternoon, thank you for including me in this agenda. Before I start, I'd like to thank, add my thanks to the trustees, the Friends of the library, and the staff in particular, for two exceptional events. I was at the Al Gore event, and I went away so excited and enthused that, number one, you could pull it off. It gave me great hope for the future of all the things we're excited about.
That was Julie Warren. Julie Warren, she's worked so hard on it.
I didn't hear Julie's name this afternoon, and I did mention it at the joint meeting that you were not able to attend, but thank you very much. You all have this in front of you, so you know that some of the things that are going on at Library Foundation, I'd like, just like to reiterate that, iterate that, we have modified our bylaws to increase the number of people on the foundation, so we've gone from seven to 11, and actually, I think the language is gonna say something like 11 people, or as many people as the board deems necessary to get the work done. And I think we're all aware that as this project moves forward, in whatever look it takes on, it's gonna take a lot more than 11 people, plus the trustees, plus the Friends, plus those people who are in the next circle out. Ed has joined us as a trustee, and a fellow, some of you may know, David Sidley has become number nine. He's a local fellow, 13 years, from Minneapolis, he's pretty well-connected in the real estate industry, and I can't tell you what he brought to the meeting, because it isn't in concrete yet, but it was an in with a donor who is on everyone's lips, who wants to raise money in this valley. The dates for the COD event has been pushed to San Bernardino County. There will be a hearing with the presiding judge for the county on February the 9th, I think is the date. On that day, they will decide whether or not COD can take the property. That will happen one way or the other, yes or no. Because COD has already put down a deposit of $12 million to hold this property, the value will later be determined by a jury, but because the deposit has been on, in place for a fair length of time, the appraisal for the property will be as of the day of the deposit. So that's minutia but important. Our community awareness program is perking along, you know, Andy Jessup and others have agreed to be part of that. I made an impassioned appeal to the Friends group to see if I could get some of their enthusiasm to be part of that, and I'm still waiting to reel them in. We have, our account with the Buzz Factory handles things like our website, and these endorsements, and party planning and so forth. We've been moved up to Mark Anderson as our rep there, so I think that says we're gonna get a little more attention and so forth. We did form a subcommittee on fundraising, and I think that's a very good thing, as we start to talk about things as simple as donations of art. You all hit on things like that, what constitutes a donation to the building. But what is our role as the foundation in raising money and awareness in addition to capital? So that's a small committee, and they're gonna work, so. I think, other than that, I'm, we moved our date to the second Tuesday to accommodate three of our members, and turned out that we are now in conflict with a Friends group, and we're gonna have to figure out how to deal with that, because I think you all know I'm a proponent of as many people sitting around the table as possible, and without the Friends at the table, I don't think we can have a complete conversation. So I'm very pleased to be part of this conversation with this group, and thank you again for including me. In the time that I've been meeting with you all, which isn't all that long, I seem to see a shift in all three groups toward, we want a new building, we want to have a conversation that includes everybody, and I think that is a very healthy way to move forward. So thank you very much for letting me be part of it.
Peter, I have a question for you. Your website, is it also on the, on the library website?
Yes, we have a link directly.
Okay, thanks.
No, thank you, Peter, we appreciate it. It's been really good working with everybody, it's good benefit, so.
All of a sudden, there seems to be light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes.
We've, for years, been saying, well, as soon as this happens, we can do this. As soon as that happens, we can do that. Well, I think the obstacles are nearly all out of the way for now, and let's hope we can move forward with some dispatch.
Thank you.
Having built some pretty big buildings over time and raised the money to build those, I know that it takes five years, no matter what you do.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
There's a gestation period, and you just can't make it any faster, so, but we need to keep the existing building safe, but I think you've made some great wise decisions to go forward, and thank you.
Thank you.
I have books to read while we.
Can I add one thing to your report, Peter? I, and I hope this is appropriate, I hope you don't mind me saying this, but the foundation also has stressed that Jeannie will be joining us as ex officio, because she is the link to all of us. And it was a unanimous vote that she needs to be there, and so she'll be attending as well as representing staff, and of course, the city library services, which I think was a great, great decision.
Another reason why we need to move it from the second Tuesday.
Yeah, but yeah, you gotta be in two places at one time, but you know, I think it's great that she's gonna be there too.
That's great. Thank you. And so finally, to wrap us up here today for a long meeting, we'll bring you to the end, trustee comments and/or requests. Anyone? Anyone?
Good meeting, sir.
The only thing we have to say now is Palm Springs Speaks is sold out for February 30th.
Very good.
So if you didn't, that's right, so if you didn't, well, you might get one, but if you didn't buy your tickets now, folks, buy them early for Lisa Scatellini.
She's gonna be awesome.
She's hilarious, she writes humor and mysteries, and just so funny, and the mysteries, oh, I read One Perfect Lie, it will grab you in the first chapter, if it doesn't, don't come to the event, but.